Hello and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for September tenth, two thousand twenty-five. If you're interested in joining our study session or our weekly tournament, send an email to midatlanticbg@gmail.com. Okay, we're gonna continue with a match here and it's gonna be me and Rick and Bill taking on the rest of the team and actually I'm on the wrong move, let me zip down here, there we go. Okay, so things are looking pretty good for the white team, so the white team is gonna be me and Rick and Bill. So you're you're probably happy you you joined this team because it's doing a lot better. All right, we got a six-two to play. I mean, we could just close up shop here, maybe something like that.
Why would we do anything else? That's the question I have.
Okay, I will offer another play, which is this. So the the main reason I would say I would suggest that this is a candidate, and I'm not saying that we should do this. It's just that playing seven to five starts to put a checker a little bit deeper. Maybe we don't want to do that, I don't know.
I I bet the plays are really close, as in irrelevantly close, but I I see what you mean, yeah.
But
because it doesn't matter if we get hit, right?
Right, but maybe maybe this is getting too cute and maybe this is
Yes.
might be the play.
That's what I say, Jason, just do that.
All right, let's let's do that. All right, we we won't bother with with Rick here until till we need to break a tie. Okay. All right, two-one for the red team.
Oh, boy.
Okay, so have to hit me with some candidate plays.
Could go eight to six with the two and then six to five with the one, it's not slotting, but
Okay.
Certainly can't get out of the hole. Not with a two and a one.
I I know I'm not on their team, Jason, but I would just make the five point.
Yep.
Okay, that's a candidate. All right, I think I have both of those in there.
Seven to five and six to five, yeah, that's a good one.
Okay. And if there's no other candidates, you could go ahead and vote.
Okay. We gotta go back out and come back in.
Yeah, so get your slider set, so this is the opportunity to get the slider set up. Whenever I do this, I I use the slider on my phone, keep my hand, my computer free for other stuff. Seems to work pretty good.
I'm getting there. Yeah.
Okay, I see, I'm seeing a couple of votes in for making the five point, let's just go ahead and do that, that looks like a sensible play.
Yep.
Prepare for something. All right, double fours. Okay, I'm not gonna say no to that. This looks pretty natural.
Yep.
Sure does.
Okay, let's roll with it.
Again, I'm back, I approve.
We were doing so so well without you.
The second crater couldn't screw this position up right right now, anyway.
Wow.
There's never a second grade around when you need one.
Okay, five-two for the red team.
If you want to get the seven and eight in, or do you want to get the twelve in closer?
Well, okay, focus first on like, how are you gonna play the five? Because you, I would suggest you probably don't want to put a checker deep, like on the three point and the two point. Because that kind of puts that checker out of play.
So twelve to seven would be five.
I like twelve-seven.
And then eight to six for the two.
Maybe, maybe even twelve-ten.
That's true.
Okay, I'm gonna put I'm gonna put both of those in there. Along with twelve-five, okay, so we've got a few options that you could vote for now. One thing you always want to consider in a position like this is, is it possible that your opponent could leave a shot? Is there anything that white could roll that would leave a shot next turn?
Think so, I think six-five does.
Six-five, yeah, so it is possible, so, and if it wasn't possible, then it may not matter a ton.
Yep.
Okay, we got a couple of votes, anybody else voting? We only have two votes, who voted here?
Not me, not me.
Okay, Bill Powell, break the tie, what do you like?
Twelve-seven-eight-six.
Twelve-seven-eight-six it is. Okay, reasonable looking play.
There you go.
So Jason, if I could, I don't mean to hijack the conversation, but for everyone's benefit and since this is an educational program. What is our thought press process in this, in our position, right, so?
Uh, I'm sorry, for which side?
For us. So before you roll the dice, when I'm playing especially live over the board, you know, I'm always trying to think, okay. Like, you know, Marty's storybook, what's your game plan? I'm always trying to think, what what am I trying to do, like? So obviously you don't want to leave a shot and you want to clear these points safely, right? And leave yourself as flexible as possible, anyway, that's my thought process in this position and uh, so that's that's all I'm saying, so.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, so.
If that's our role, that makes that job very easy.
With with this role, yeah. Okay, I'm gonna pause the recording just for a moment.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, we're
This role plays itself.
Yeah, this role plays itself, just bring them on in. Okay, so, um, all right, back to the red team. Ah, sixes, so here's a here's an important decision to be made.
Don't you want to get out of Dodge?
Well, you want to run one guy for sure, because it's forced anyway.
Yeah, one guy for sure, that's right, because you can't play four-sixes.
What I found oftentimes, maybe not here, but oftentimes, when you play the when you play what's forced first. Then it becomes obvious what to do also, maybe not here, but sometimes it does.
Yep.
Having done this, if I do want to stay back, I'll stay back with both of those guys, I would then be wanting to go seventeen-eleven. And then probably twelve and eleven, bring them in.
Okay.
So I've got two guys on the seven point, two guys on the twenty-three point, everybody else home.
Okay, so
I'm still not gonna, I'm not, I'm not gonna win this game anyway, but I I don't want to get gammoned.
All right, so, um, if you feel like if you feel like you're not going to win this game, um, is your best bet maybe to just bail out with all the checkers?
Well, yes, but I'm not giving up on not winning it.
Okay, so you're you're okay, so you haven't given up on winning.
And I'm not, I'm only basically wasting one pip by bringing in both twelve and eleven from outside.
Right.
Right, I think that's a good one, Bill.
If I had, if I had to go seven to one twice in order to stay back, then I probably would not do it. Because I would be wasting ten pips in that event. Instead of, here I'm wasting one pip, I think it's worth wasting one pip.
Okay, so when you play, when you make the ace point, what you're doing is you're saying, um, I'm really trying
I'm not gonna do that, but I'm saying if I did
Right, no, but I'm just saying, if you did that, your game plan is, um, I'm really trying to win this game, I'm trying to hit a shot. And in order for me to succeed, uh, I need the best board I can to contain the checker that I eventually hope to hit.
Oh, I'm still planning to make the four point and the ace point, possibly as well. But not on this move.
Jason, I'll just add what I was thinking to what you said, which is in that case, the ten pips that he was talking about aren't really wasted, that's actually beneficial. You you need to find a way to use up the pips while buying time to wait on your shot.
Could be, yeah, that's that's possible.
I'm probably not gonna wait that much longer.
Desperate game like this, you don't want to make the ace point here, because if in the miracle opportunities, chance that we did get hit, they would hope we'd come in on the ace point and not the four.
Yeah, there's a thought to be had about that, too, yeah, maybe you don't really want your ace point.
Right, because then we can maybe get a second checker back.
Yeah, all all these are possible.
I like that move.
Okay, now, i- if looking at white structure, how likely is it that you're gonna get a shot?
No, no, no. No time on the next roll, none.
On the next roll, none.
Unless I'm unless I'm allowed to move the checkers for you, then maybe.
In the future, not looking good, it's you're not gonna generate a lot of shots from this position, certainly not impossible, but it's tough.
Okay, well. It could be, it could actually, the best move very well might be, I'll pull twenty, pull all three off the twenty-three.
It could be, and and that's the move where you're saying I want to avoid
That that I'm just giving up any hope of winning the game.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I don't get gammoned.
All right, all that being said, we're ready to vote, I've got some options in there. Only one vote so far.
I'm I'm studying. Um, did you put in there any for taking them all out?
That's the third option.
No, that would be twenty-three to seventeen with three.
Yes, but then the the second move in there is twenty-three to eleven, so that brings the third checker out.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we do have a couple of votes for twenty-three to five, twelve-six. Okay, let's let's go with that. If you have a TV on in the background, can you turn that off? We're we're getting some background noise. Okay, four-two to play for the white team.
Do you want to, um, check whether they should have just abandoned hope and played to avoid the gammon?
Uh, the answer is no, do not abandon hope, all ye who enter here. Hang on. Um, so twelve, the play that was made tied for the best play, so hang on and preserve what chances, you have six percent winning chances. I I've seen more improbable things in backgammon.
So you saw something more improbable last Sunday night?
Uh, what, wait, what?
Sorry, nevermind.
Oh. Oh, is this a football reference?
Four off, five-three.
Yeah, so spread the checkers out, nice distribution.
That that's a beautiful distribution.
Yeah, it's very nice.
It's a work of art.
Okay, we're gonna do it, there we go. Two-one.
Perfect.
I mean, I suggest this this plays itself.
Make your four point.
Make the four point, looks pretty good, right?
Gotta gotta make the four point, got.
All right, let's not even vote on this, it's it's not easy. All right, six-two to play.
Six off, six-four.
No, not six-four, we don't have any bad rolls. Um, if we leave the three on the six, so I would say three-one actually is kind of nice.
Okay, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer a third option, which is five to three.
Yeah.
That's smart, I think five-three is the best for the white team, actually, I hope they do six to four instead.
Yeah.
Gives us a shot, maybe.
I just feel like this may be quicker to a a bad roll than the other.
Um, so you're saying this is
aside from the one that we can play off, I know normally, you know, having an odd number on the six and combined six and five isn't ideal. But there's really not much that, there's nothing that can go wrong this time, and I have a feeling it's probably as good or better on the following rule, but I don't know.
All right, let me make my argument for putting that extra checker on the three point, which is just observe how threes play. You're, we're gonna start to lack for options on playing threes. Particularly once we get rid of that spare checker on the six point, the threes can only be played with the spare off the four. Or by bearing off from the three point.
So much TV is on.
Okay, uh, yeah.
Okay.
I I think that's right.
Bill Spruce, how say you?
Uh, you're better than me, so I'll go with what you say, I think I agree with you, although uh, in my play is probably the third worst, but I don't think any of them are gonna be devastatingly uh, horrible.
Okay, I've strong arm, strong armed Bill into this play.
Yeah, I suppose.
All right, let's see how we did, um, wrong. Oh, wow, three legal moves and I got the third best play.
Oops.
And look at six-four, six-off.
Okay, that's
I I I'm I'm confused about that.
Um.
A lower win, more gammon. It assumes things go right.
Ah.
It prepares you to clear from the rear.
Yeah, I mean, that's the reason I suggested it in the first place was just because I, it was the first thing that jumped at me in the whole clear from the rear thought process, but I won't rub it in.
Yeah, you can.
I can't really claim smug equity, but you get, what what is the inverse of that?
I don't, yeah, we need a term for the opposite of smug. Okay, uh, how are we gonna play this three-one? Give me some candidate plays.
Seven to four, seven to six, if you want to clear those two, but then if you have a six, but we need a six to get out.
Okay, so if you
You want to have the option, you want to have the option to stay with a six, uh, I say six to two, keep the six-point prime alive.
All right. I've also put in seven-four, six-five.
Interesting.
As opposed to seven-three, which keeps the five available? Let's put that one in there. Okay, I think we could vote, had some more reasonable plays in here. It's a little thin, we're not getting very many votes. You know, uh, I think we s- we scared people away with our high-level discussion of take points last week. Okay, we got a vote for six to two, we got a vote for seven to three. More votes. Uh, there's a vote for six to two, okay.
Now the vote for six to two.
Yeah.
But I don't, I can't get the slider thing working again, I don't understand, some weeks I get it going well and sometimes I don't. I don't understand it, it's the same computer every time, I never try to use a tablet or a phone or anything.
Okay, seven-four, six-five was, uh, slightly on top, and then there's some weird plays, seven-four, two-one, I don't really get that.
Hmm.
Seven-four, two-one, huh, that's second best?
Double fours, ooh. This is
Good. Get makes makes a gap somewhere.
Yep.
Well, actually, better if it doesn't, that makes no gaps, that's even better, two up to five and two comes, two guys five to one and two guys four off would be beautiful, we get
We can start with the four.
Three, I would even, I would even redouble then.
Hey, Bill Powell, let us move.
I'm giving you the the worst move.
Jason, so start with the forced, five-one, four off, yeah, okay, those are two.
And it's gonna be really ugly either way.
Mm-hmm.
I I I say it's gonna be ugly either way, get closer to home, take the checkers off.
This we need I'd have to really stop and count out bad rolls, it's not obvious.
All right, let's let's count how many rolls will leave a shot from this position. Um, okay, so if you roll doubles, uh, double sixes, double fives. Um, double fours does not leave a shot. Um. Okay, so just sixes and fives, all right, then there's, there's six-five, six-four. Um. Six-five, six-four.
Four-three.
Four-three. Okay, that might be it. Okay. If that's it, then now let's look at the other play. Okay, what's gonna leave a shot here? All right, so for the doubles, again, it's, um, it's
We pick up fours now, which we didn't have before.
Correct.
Uh, double sixes, double fives, double fours, okay, that's that's three, and how about the non-doubles?
We're okay on the six-one, six-two, six-three.
Okay, six-five and six-four.
Right. And four-five-four, five, the four-three is okay, but five-four is not.
Oh, yeah, four-three is okay. Six-five, six-four, and what else? What was the other one you had?
Five-four.
Five-four, yeah. Okay.
Were you counting?
Yeah, I'm counting, that's, uh, nine for this and eight for the other one. So I mean, this is, this is safer in the short term.
Yeah, but then also
This is this is less safe in the short term.
It's less safe in the short term and it gets fewer off.
Yeah, so can't do it, don't do it.
So you guys are saying to take the checkers off.
Yes.
Okay, well, these these plays make me nervous, all right, uh, I'm I'm gonna go along with this.
We just counted the shots, what are you worried about?
We did, um, it's just the 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 lower gap is, um, tends to be more dangerous, because you you have to worry about it for longer, so there's
Yeah, but we got two more checkers off in this last shot.
No, the the two checkers is probably enough to swing it, um, I I'm just nervous about these, and I get a lot of these wrong, so, um.
They're gonna break their board now.
Okay.
They're gonna roll double sixes and break the board, we're fine.
This is our play, we're gonna do it.
Let's do it.
Oh, wow, we're geniuses, unbelievable. Uh, this game's so easy.
Two seconds ago, you were chicken and un.
Yeah, I'm I'm changing my tune now.
Actually, notice, you you were right, Jason, in that we out, we lowered our win chances, but the extra two checkers really pays off in gammon.
Gammons, right, so you wouldn't make this play at double match point.
In fact, there's even a non-insignificant backgammon on probability.
Yeah, right. Which, oh, what, at this score doesn't matter, because we're three away and the cube's on two.
Got it, yep.
Okay. Four and two for the red team.
I don't think it's time to split yet, if we're gonna try to snag a
Yes, right, sometimes you want to split those checkers to maximize some hitting chances, right? Okay, I've thrown in a a few options. Um, so I I put in, all right, so Steven suggests he thinks it's time to split, so I put that in there as an option. You know, one thing you'd have to do is, is does that, um, does that create more, uh, shot numbers, or when it does create more shot numbers, are you actually getting more shots, you know, stuff like that?
Uh, uh, this interesting conversation, Jason, is I think, I mean, I know we're not on their team, but I think I'd split two with the blood on the ace point. I'd take my chances that if I'm hit, I gotta shot from the bar.
And you know, there's another option I didn't even put in there, what about, you know, just running out with a checker from the back?
That's
That's what I meant, that's what I would have done.
Ah, okay, and and then that way it holds together the the six-point board?
So you go twenty-two, team?
Twenty, I'm sorry, I'm not on their team, but I would run from the back, yes.
Okay, all right, so So there's a, there's a new option on the board.
Offered by the enemy.
It's all in the family.
Yes.
I mentioned twenty-three, I mentioned twenty-three to seventeen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it's the best thing, though, but I did mention it.
Okay, we're all over the board, we're we're tied, um, so uh, Bill Powell, you're gonna
Trying to get my slider thing to work on, uh, okay, my final thing was, uh, split the backman and bring one in from the, uh, from the bar. Seven to seven to three, twenty-three, twenty-one, I guess would be the right way to say it.
Okay, I'm gonna hazard a guess that that's not right, but I'm not
I would think that's not.
We'll find out.
Oh, yes.
I'm I'm on fire today.
It's the best. Forty-eight smug points better than the twenty-three-seventeen.
Yeah, that now that's a lot of smug equity right there.
You go, Bill.
Okay, six and one, this is easy, just rip them off.
Yep. Nice roll.
Okay, three-one to play.
One, two, if I said eight, boy, it's getting close.
Yeah, it is.
Shit, may have to run, oh, damn it, no, I I refuse. I'm not doing it, I stay, seven-fourth, two-one, give give myself one more opportunity, they can roll like a stupid six-two or something.
Six-two or six-four.
Mm-hmm.
What if you did twenty-one to eighteen, left your twenty-three there and brought your seven-six?
That's, that's a, that's, I think that's another good play, too. Makes two crossovers, could be helpful in saving that all-important gammon.
Yes.
We lose a gammon, that's the match. Right, of course, we're, yeah, our opponent's three away, I get four points, it's it's over, yeah, okay. So that certainly is reasonable.
Okay, the slider is open, ready to collect your votes. Okay, we got a couple of votes for
Went to slider, I did slider, then I didn't get the thing. It come up, asked for the code twelve-ninety-six, and I don't get to see that for some reason.
Okay. Okay, five-two.
It's safe.
Punt and save, wait for another day?
Wow.
Yep, of course.
Wow.
No one gets, I should volunteer a shot right now, that would be ludicrous. All right, next.
Okay.
Oh.
Run for the eighteen.
Yep.
Stay back, we got, there's a lot of rolls, well, there's a fair, a fair opportunity to get a shot now.
Eighteen to eight.
Eighteen to eight, absolutely.
Okay, all right, probably no need to vote on this, you wanna, you wanna hang back, okay, let's do it. Uh, let me go back and look, okay, that one was right, and how about the three-one, the three-one?
Yeah, it's third.
That's close. All right, uh, four-three to play, so the
Oh, boy.
Four is forced. So I don't see any reason why we wouldn't just
Take a three off.
Yeah.
Taking three off would be ludicrous.
We, yeah, we 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 can't be
Give us a double shot, I mean, come on. On purpose?
Uh, they missed, all right.
Been on six and, and he's come on out.
All right, bring them around, don't save any pips.
Save, yeah, don't waste it. Don't waste it. We can barely see the gammon as it is, all right, bring that guy six and five.
Can still do it with the doubles if
If we get a one, we can still be screwed.
A one.
All right, somebody comes in, somebody comes off, save.
Saved again. Save the gammon.
Okay.
So.
Alright, Crawford game now.
Crawford game, yep. One away.
Alright, seven away, seven away means what in terms of gammons? Does a gammon have value?
It doesn't have much value, but a backgammon does.
A, that's right, a gammon does not have much value because. You would only get to, um, you're either gonna get to six away or you're gonna get to five away, those are basically the same. Because you're, you're taking steps of two uh, in this route to victory.
Yes.
Okay, so because you don't really care about a gammon, you probably don't wanna make the two points. So I'm gonna put in the two reasonable plays here, one is to run and one is to split.
So twenty-four, fourteen is one of them, right?
Yeah, that's the running play.
Yeah. And.
The other one is.
Thirteen to nine.
Twenty-four, eighteen, thirteen, nine.
Yeah, yeah, which is sort of, that's just, that's the play I would, I.
I think thirteen to seven, twenty-four, twenty should be considered also.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Uh, there, there's really no circumstance in which I play that on an opening roll.
Which one, I'm sorry?
Twenty-four, twenty, thirteen, seven.
Well, is, I tell you what it's better than, it's better than eight to two, six to two, in my opinion.
I actually don't think it is.
Well, we'll find out when we, when we see the thing.
Okay, now this time I'm going to collect smug equity if I'm right.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so a couple of votes for running and nothing for anything else, so we're gonna go ahead and do that. Okay. And back to this move. The, uh, making the two point is behind those other plays because the gammons aren't worth very much.
Yeah, well, that was part of my reason.
Okay, and here's the twenty-four, twenty, thirteen, seven. You give up too many, give up too many shots that way. Okay, six, one.
Take the bar.
Alright, five and three.
Three point.
Twenty-four, sixteen, but then you're open with two shots, two pieces, two. That's scary.
I've been lucky with thirteen, ten, thirteen, eight. But I know it leaves a lot of shots.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Thirteen, ten, fourteen, nine, uh, fourteen.
Okay, uh, wait, say that again, Bill?
Thirteen, ten, fourteen, nine, I think is reasonable. I like making.
And Steven suggests twenty-four, twenty-one, fourteen, nine. Okay, I have all of those in the slide-o now.
But it's an interesting play, Jason, and I think I'm primarily interested to see if XG sticks with, just make the five point. Or if because of the score situation, the outfield control is more important, so.
Well, so the value of making the three point again is diminished because of.
Yeah.
The, the gammons aren't worth much, so.
I get it, right, right, right.
So I'm willing to bet that the three point is not gonna be the right play.
I, I think fourteen, ten, thirteen, uh, sorry, fourteen, nine, thirteen, tens probably the play, but we'll see.
The one I was looking at isn't even one of the five choices up there.
What were you looking at?
Fourteen, eleven, thirteen, eight.
Oh, let's put that in there.
Hmm, I like that one.
Less blocks. Less, less, less things to build stuff with too, though.
It's less gun.
It's, it's a compromise, it, yeah, it, fewer buil-, fewer loose builders as a liability, but also as an asset.
All indirect shots, I think, of his assets.
Hey, we need some votes.
The direct shots are liabilities.
Oh, sorry about that.
Uh, we only have two votes in there. Okay, we have three votes for three different plays.
One of them is. Is any of them, is any of them thirteen, ten, fourteen, nine?
Yes.
Then I'll make, make that a second vote.
Alright. There we go, alright, that is one of the two plays that I like most. And the other one that I like is twenty-four, twenty-one, fourteen, nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, that's true.
Lets the back checker see daylight, that's my first choice and the play here is my second choice. Wow, three point is uh, better than I, I thought. Very interesting.
Play we made by fifteen.
I get my smug equity back.
Yeah, the fourteen, eleven, thirteen, three, thirteen eights, correct?
Alright.
Wow.
Four, one for Team White.
Four, one?
Yeah, we got a four, one to play.
Well, uh, so on that thought, like I said earlier about thinking about what we should or shouldn't do. I, I, I don't think we should be splitting our back checkers at this point because it's too late.
I don't know, I'm debating between thirteen, eight or thirteen, nine and split the back checkers.
I'll split the back checkers with the ace, I'm sorry, I was thinking of a.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't go to the twenty, but the twenty-three. Doubles up our shots and it doesn't make us an inviting target.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'd play this case, I couldn't agree to this, I think. I mean, it's our last chance to split these back checkers before um, the mountain comes down on us.
Oh, I, I, I like that way of putting it, this is, this is our last chance before we, we get.
I mean, we don't do it now, we're gonna have two checkers on the ace point for the rest of the game, so.
Okay, so we're okay with this play?
Yeah, I like it.
Okay, well, there it is. And.
Oh, boy.
Uh-huh. The big split, okay, I, I'm not, uh, I'm not bold enough for plays like this. This is, this feels a little crazy, but okay, again, you know, one of the, one of the answers is, we don't care if we get gammon, not that much anyway.
Right, and the fours are duplicative.
You start, start both five points, hoping to make one.
The gammon percentage isn't even all that great, uh, uh, that's not its reasoning.
It's just about winning the most games.
Yep.
Interesting.
Okay, five, four to play for Team White.
We're gonna lose our special world championship.
Looks like making the five point looks good to me.
Right, make the five point up, yeah. I agree.
Okay, I'm gonna put this up for a vote. Uh, I've thrown in the running play. Just because you, you really have to consider the running play when you have a race.
Of course. It only gives a three shot directly. The, the three's not, if nothing gets hit, you know, the Reds in good shape to make points and be safe and win, win the game.
Bill, I will point out though, that while the others are indirect, a three together with a seventy to nine adds up to quite a few numbers.
Yes.
Yep, so I don't wanna give the three. I give nothing by making a five point.
Okay, and so there's a couple of votes for making the five point, when in doubt, make the five point, and I'm actually not sure there is all that much doubt, so. Uh, there we go. And XG says, yes, right by a lot, I, I tried to tempt you with this terrible running play, which leaves way too many shots.
Almost a whopper, wow.
I, I tried.
Didn't he go that bad?
Guys, here we go, make the five point.
Hey, we just did that.
Lock him in.
So now we need six, one to make ours be all even. Alright, here, double twos, really, hmm. Alrighty, six to four twice, at least.
Yeah.
Thirteen to eleven twice, that's what I like. Still stay back on the one point. But maybe come up twenty-four, twenty-two and go thirteen, eleven just one time, is the other thing, I did, one of those.
Okay, well, I got them both in there.
Gotta go six to four twice, I guess, if you don't do that, I can't imagine what's, what's correct. I guess there, maybe there's some argument for thirteen to nine twice.
Oh, yeah, we better put that in there.
Is there a score that might make six to two twice hitting appropriate?
Yeah, maybe, if you, you know, if you are a desirous of gammons, I could definitely see that.
Yep, but gammon is not worth very much here, so probably not worth it. Probably, probably gains you one percent additional match equity or something like that, I think.
Yeah, you're on the red team.
Okay.
Okay, we got a few votes and they are for the, uh, to step up in the back, make the four point and then come down. It's like a nice balanced play.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go, and.
Oops.
Oh, very close, very close. Okay. They made their four points, so we can't anchor there, that's rough.
That's right, that's why we did it. I knew you had a three, too, I was hoping you hit, you hit us six to three. And slot six to four, but I, I'm, I'm sure you won't do that move.
Well, I'll tell you, I wanna head on the three point.
I do too, so.
I wanna head on the three point because they're heading the race, it's the last checker, they wanna, they wanna run out.
I, I think, I think I agree, I think the hitting is, hitting is like the first, like the three, that's where the three has to be played, there's no question in my mind.
So we gotta decide on two.
Since going to the eleven doesn't put it in range for anything, do you wanna do twenty-four? Advance the anchor while we.
Well, okay, so it's not indirect range, but it does produce um, some indirect covers. Uh, six, two, double fours, double twos. Um, it also produces a few more builders, maybe to make a point at the edge of the prime, I don't know, I'm, I'm spitballing here, I'm.
Yeah, my, my first thought was to, the eleven was to come off the mid to the eleven, but uh, I don't know that I'm married to any.
I'm not either, um, because I, I can see the merits of stepping up here, it's gonna be easier to extricate. Um, when they uh, are unable to get out.
And it gives us a great ace to play.
Yeah, right.
Very low anywhere else.
There's the possibility of, of being able to anchor there a little more easily, you know, if, if this, if this goes badly. Don't we wanna anchor on the, the twenty-two point?
Yeah, yeah, I like, I like this.
Okay, so this is the, uh, the fallback.
When, 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 when we get hit, it's a better opportunity for an anchor.
Yeah, okay, um, I think you've talked me into it, Rick?
Yeah.
Okay, done.
Hello, gentlemen.
And.
Excuse me for interrupting, I'm new, but when you wanna join the tournament, what do you do?
Um, just hang out.
Yeah, hang out and we'll, we'll get you in the tournament when we're uh, done with the study session, which is in just a few minutes.
Thank you both.
We will not be doing the study session too much longer, we're, we're very close to the end. Okay.
It's interesting.
Alright, so we did get hit.
Yeah.
Yep.
Not a very good dice roller.
And uh, I think maybe thirteen, eleven's right.
Right, thirteen, eleven and hit the twenty-two.
Um, anybody have another play they want to?
Well, eleven to nine has to have some merit, cause you're on the bar. You have very few rolls that come in and his, he has, he had he like a one, six, two, six, three, six only. And the uh, when you don't.
Why would you give us a good six if we don't have one?
Because it gives us a six to hit you with. That's why. I'm saying it's correct, I'm just saying that, that would be a reason why.
Mm-hmm, okay, well, I've got them both in there, I think those are the two obvious candidate plays, okay, you can vote. We've probably got a, a couple more plays in us before we quit. Okay, so. Alright, all the votes are for making the eleven point, having, that asset is good, right? Uh, random outfield points are, are a good thing, you, you never know how they're gonna come into.
Yep.
Useful. Okay, let's go back and look, yeah, not really close. Uh, eleven to nine gives the white team six returns off the bar, one, six, two, six, three, six.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, six, two.
Two sixes rolled also, how about that?
Oh, boy.
Honey, honey's made for that, that other play now.
I think, I think you gotta come out from the twenty-two point, Jesus.
I, I tend to agree with that.
I don't see any other reasonable six, I mean, other, you don't wanna, you don't wanna take the spare off.
Seven is tempting.
It's. I think that's what could be used, I think that spare could be useful, Rick, and, and, and we should try to probably escape that. One, that checker, I don't know, I'm, I would come out.
Yeah, it, it's really easy to hit and we don't have a direct um, response if we do get hit. But you're right, we might as well force.
You have to break a point to hit it, so.
Yeah, and we've got the anchor, so we have some security here, so if we get hit, it's not, it's not terrible. So I, I, I like going for this play, what do you guys think?
I, I'm, I suggested it, I'm all for it.
You did, yep, Rick?
I'm okay with it, I, I'm curious if the other is much inferior worth or comparable though.
Okay, so this time I think.
I can't have Rick having smug equity.
I know, he's got enough today already, that's. Okay.
Oh, look at.
Slightly inferior, okay, yes.
And I, I feel like I, I'm not guessing on this, I, I feel like I, uh, that uh. The, the reason this is right is just we need to mobilize these checkers, and if it get hit, it, if it gets hit, it gets sent back to where it was anyway.
This, this is one of those cases in my limited experience. Jason, that I just, I feel this move, like I've seen it enough, it has to be right to get that checker out of there, I've just seen it too many times. To not be correct in this case.
I think it's just that you need to get your checkers into play, into useful situation, and then. Uh, ye- yes, you could get hit here, um, but then there's.
Probably make, breaking a point, so.
Yeah, there's, there's other roles that they, they can throw where they don't hit you and things start to get a little awkward for them. And because of your presence there, which is, this is the in-your-face play, right?
Man, if we've got them wasting time hitting us there, I really don't care, because another checker back isn't gonna make any difference at this point, anyway.
It, it was already back there to begin with.
Yeah, it was back there to begin with.
Okay, five and two.
And I don't care what.
Eleven, nine, nine to four.
Sure.
I'll go with that.
Yep. It's good as anything.
A- Adam coming in angry.
Probably the best.
Adam, Adam plays best when he's a little, uh, little on edge.
He's always on edge.
That's why he was, he's playing his best.
Are there other options to consider? I don't, I don't see them.
I threw in eleven, nine, eleven, six.
Sure, that's, that's reasonable.
We can go thirteen, eight, thirteen, eleven also, I mean, get them both covered, but I wouldn't do it.
Oh, my god.
Okay, looks like the vote is to hit and pick it up.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, um, alright. Alright, let's make this the last play and then we'll stop uh, before the next roll, and I don't know. Same idea, just step out? Be confrontational?
Yeah, that's right, stepping out to a triple shift.
Yeah, I, 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 it can't be right to have three checkers on the two point, I don't think, I mean, that's the thing, it doesn't look right to me.
Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree with that, and again, we have the anchor, that's some security. Um, this kinda forces Red to do something about this block. So, um, for example, if Red rolls um, five, one, and they say, okay, well, we really wanna make our three. There, our three point, yeah, go ahead, but then you got this block to contend with. So they might not be able to.
Yep.
You're not gonna roll for the red, right?
Um, no.
Can we talk it, can we talk about the possibility of a cube here?
No, you're not allowed to. Yeah, hit, this was the last move.
It was the Crawford game.
Crawford, Adam.
He came in late.
Crawford, I'm sorry.
That, that's why, what I meant by you're not allowed to.
I had to talk about it, yeah.
Yeah, so you're not allowed to talk about it.
Where's it say Crawford, where's it say?
At the lower.
Top.
It's at the bottom.
Lower right, got it.
Right and lower.
Or at the top.
Okay, uh, this is our last play, are we, we stepping out? Bill, you're good with this?
Yeah.
Rick?
I don't like it, but I think it's.
Okay. Okay, all right. Rick just wants to clean up with his smug equity. Okay, fine. All right, this is the last play and then we're gonna do the tournament. Okay, and let's see, and yes, this was, this was right. Okay, that is the end. I'm going to mute everyone real quick and do the sign-off.
Up.